Thank you for joining us this evening for the November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Montesereno City Council meeting. Before the meeting is called to order, I would like to point out a few house rules to assist council members, staff, and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. Council members, your microphone is live, so please keep your microphones on even till you wish to speak. For tonight's meeting, we are using Zoom to host the city council regular meeting. At the bottom of the Zoom client, there are two icons, chat and raise hand. Please use chat only to report technical issues such as being unable to hear a council member speak. Please reuse raise hand to be recognized by the mayor and unable to speak to the council. To comment under oral communication or any agenda item, you are allowed three minutes to speak per agenda item. Email submitted to three hundred and fifty words can also be submitted to the city clerk, and it will be read into the record. This word limit is set to hear the typical three-minute time allowance. Only attendees using the Zoom application can use the raise hand option to comment. Participants calling in from the telephone will be able to listen and can now provide feedback or public comment. Lastly, because we are not all in the same room, all votes in this meeting will be taken by.
Thank you. Pleasure of allegiance, cultural lawyer, if you're kind of leaders in the pledge.
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic where which stands a nation, a world.
Thank you. And the next item is phone call.
Councilmember Lawler, present. Councilmember Luthold.
Present.
Councilmember Turner. Mayor Prochek, Mekachuk.
Present.
And Mayor Lahey.
Present. Orders of the day, does anyone have any suggestions or want to make any changes to the order of business? All right, hearing none, is any member of the public wish to make any changes to the orders of the day? Hearing none, we'll go to oral communications. Are there any individuals who wish to address the council on any matters that are not listed on the agenda but that have to do with city business? Do we have any hands raised for that?
So nothing that is pertaining to this agenda? Okay, we do, we have resident. And person. Mayor Lahey.
Yes.
Tony Jeans. Here, present.
Okay, can the camera focus on him or no?
Once he stands up.
Okay.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Thank you.
I'm here for another meeting, but I thought I would bring up a few things. You're well into the ADU program, and it appears to be doing quite well. I'm actually designing five at the moment in Montesereno. So I'm helping to contribute to that. But I do think it's very one-sided. You're getting one series of one size of houses in the eight to twelve thousand, twelve hundred square foot range. I think it's time to revisit SB nine again so that you can broaden things. I know that SB nine was very controversial when it was introduced, but other jurisdictions are now starting to do it very well. Specifically, Montesereno, sorry, Los Gatos has just gone through their final version of the ordinance, and they have arranged for it to require when you do an SB nine lot split, you can build two houses on the secondary lot, one of which must be the size of an ADU, the other which of which can be whatever the zoning would allow based on the size of the parcel. And that is working out very well. I've done a couple in Los Gatos. I've done a couple in Saratoga. I've been some in San Jose. And I have clients who would like to do some in Montesereno, and I think it would broaden the base of houses, but restricting them to two eight hundred square foot units does not make sense. It discourages them from doing SB nine at the moment. I suspect you have not had many or any applications for SB nine. So I would like to suggest that in the new year, you bring up a discussion with a proposal somewhat similar to the very original one that staff presented to you a year ago and see where that goes. See if you want to look at, I would really regard Los Gatos as a very good example because I like the balance of having a small unit, a large unit, like an ADU and a reasonable-sized house. I think that works very well. I think it fits the properties here, and I think it fits the neighborhood. So that's my, that's my oral discussion for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jeans. Your comments are always appreciated. Anybody else who wishes to address council at this time? All right. Okay, looks like we don't have anybody. In communications, there were a number of emails that were attached to the agenda that have been sent to council. Are there any additional emails that are not attached?
Nothing else.
Okay. We go to the consent calendar. We've got seven items on the consent calendar. Does anybody wish to pull any items from the consent calendar? Any member of the public wish to have any comments on the consent calendar? If not, we'll take a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Still moved.
I'm wishing my mayor put a mega check second.
Well, second half.
Second, I call our lawyer, roll call please.
Councilmember Turner.
Yes.
Councilmember Lawler, yes. Councilmember Luthold.
Yes.
And for Trent Mekachuk.
I.
Mayor Lahey.
I.
Passes.
All right, the consent calendar is approved, move on to new business. And that's consideration of appointment of Natalia Nazarova to fill one of two vacancies on the Montesereno Better Streets Commission. Staff report, please.
I believe that we have public hearings next. Would you like us to go to?
Did I miss something? Oh, public hearing, sorry about that. Yeah, I went, I went too fast. Yeah, public hearing, thank you for correcting. Public hearings are adoption of ordinance number NS two thirty, and then NS two thirty-one. Staff report, please.
Thank you. Good evening. I am Diana Perkins, the city planner. And every three years, the California State Building Standards Commission adopts updated building codes. The two thousand and twenty-two building code versions were adopted by the state and will be effective on January first, two thousand and twenty-three. The first ordinance before you tonight is the adoption of the state building codes, which is substantially the same as the current ordinance, except it does include updated local amendments to the fire code based on recommendations from the Santa Clara County Fire Prevention Division. The second ordinance includes the REACH code standards that the city council discussed at the September sixth council meeting. The ordinance includes the following requirements for new construction. One level two EV receptacle and associated infrastructure will be required at each enclosed garage parking space with a maximum of two and one additional EV receptacle outside of the garage. Secondly, all indoor appliances will be required to be electric except for cooking appliances, and outdoor appliances can be electric or gas fueled. Lastly, all new construction will require the installation of an automatic hot water recirculating system. Both of these ordinances had their first reading and were introduced by the city council at the November first meeting. Due to requirements specific to ordinances that involve building foot adoption, the second reading and adoption of the ordinance tonight are required to be a public hearing item rather than a consent calendar item. Staff recommends that the city adopt and waive the second reading of ordinance numbers NS two thirty and NS two thirty-one. That completes the staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any member of council, any council member have any questions for Ms. Perkins?
Yes, this is the same ordinance that we passed the first reading of. Is that correct? There's no changes to it.
That is correct.
Okay, so this is the second reading, and it's, I understand. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Any other questions? Councilmember Turner?
Yes, is it possible to slip this up and get two votes, one on NS two thirty and the other one on NS two thirty-one?
And I would actually recommend that the mayor open a public hearing on one ordinance, take public comment on it, and then have a vote, and then open public hearing on the second ordinance, take public comment, and have a vote.
So let's just see, we are now questioning the first ordinance, which is NS dash two thirty. Any other member of council have any other questions on that particular ordinance of staff? If not, we'll go to the public. Does any member of the public have any questions of ordinance number two, NS two thirty at this time? If so, please raise your hand.
I don't see any raised hand.
Okay, hearing none, we're back to council. Does any council member wish to make any further comments on that particular ordinance? If not, do I have a motion for approval of ordinance number NS two thirty at this time?
Motion to approve.
From Councilmember Turner, motion to approve, any second?
I'll second that.
Therefore, Mekachuk seconds, roll call please.
Councilmember Luthold.
Yes.
Councilmember Turner.
Yes.
Councilmember Lawler, yes. Mayor Prochek, Mekachuk.
I.
And Mayor Lahey.
I.
Motion passes.
Thank you. So now we go to the second ordinance, NS two thirty-one. I think the staff report has already covered that ordinance, so we don't need any. And this, Ms. Perkins wants to add anything further to our staff report for that particular ordinance?
No, thank you. I don't have anything to add.
All right, great, thank you. So we'll go back to staff. Questions, if any council member have any questions on that ordinance of staff, please go ahead. Also, Turner, did you have a question?
No, not questions. I will have comments probably later on.
Okay. Any, so there's no questions. Let's go to the public. Any member of the public have any questions on this ordinance of staff? Or comments?
I have a raise.
Hands are raised, we'll come back to council. So this is the type of comments on this particular ordinance by members of council. Please go ahead, Councilmember Turner.
Yeah, so I just wanted to make, reiterate some comments I made at our last meeting. At our last council meeting, we discussed the REACH code. Now, these codes are coming up for their second reading, and they will be passed at our next meeting. These are significant changes, which I believe would be opposed by many of our residents. It is important that we will, that we should be transparent in what we're doing. I was disappointed to see that this agenda did not explicitly call out that it is the REACH codes that will be voted on tonight. I do not see that as transparent, and I hope it will be corrected when the REACH codes come up for a third time and the final vote at that meeting. So that's one of my comments. The other comments I'd like to make is I would like to emphasize that NS two thirty-one, the ordinance, it passed, increases the strain on our already overloaded electrical grid. We make it more likely that our city will suffer blackouts and maybe even forest fires. So that's one point. The second point I'd like to make is that this increases the cost of building in Montesereno by thousands of dollars. Okay? Also, my third point is that our citizens should be given the freedom of choice, which has been taken away from them by this council. Again, let me state that it is arrogant and hypocritical for the council to complain about state legislature taking away our local control to manage building development in Montesereno when this council turns around, and that's the same things to our residents, dictating to them how they must manage their homes. Therefore, I will be voting no on this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else have any comments? If not, we'll take a motion to approve ordinance number two thirty-one.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilmember Luthold, second.
I'll second that motion.
All right, your motion, a second roll call please.
That, that motion is the wait the second reading of and adopt ordinance number NS dash two three one. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lawler, yes. Councilmember Luthold.
Yes.
Councilmember Turner.
No.
Mayor Prochek, Mekachuk.
I.
And Mayor Lahey.
I.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right. There was one public hearing. I don't believe we have any other open public hearings. So we go to the new business appointment of Natalia Nazarova to fill one of two vacancies on the Montesereno Better Street Commission. Is she present by any chance?
No, she, she let me know she was going to try to make it to this meeting, but I don't see her logged in.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for looking into that. Staff report, please.
Yeah, the Better Streets Commission consists of five residents appointed by the council for a two-year term. Currently, there is one vacancy, and one of the terms is going to be also ending for one of the commissioners at the end of this year. Staff opened the recruitment on October sixth of two thousand and twenty-two, and one applicant was received, one application was received. So staff recommends that the city council appoint Natalia Naza-Rova to fill one of the two vacancies of the Montesereno Better Streets Commission.
Thank you. Any member of council have any questions of staff or comment? You probably take questions, comments at the same time, I guess, on this one. We can do that. Councilmember Turner, please go ahead.
Yes, I just wanted to ask a quick question here. Are the applicants here supposed to be residents of Montesereno?
Yes, I believe they're supposed to be residents of Montesereno.
Okay, so I didn't understand one of her answers. She says, I've been leaving Los Gatos for seven years. So is she leaving Los Gatos and she's leaving Montesereno? Is that what it is?
Good question. So I didn't actually look at this application. Sorry about that. So typically, we forward these to our city engineer. So let me, I can reach out to her and just confirm to make sure, because at times we do have, you know, folks that either live in Los Gatos and still have a home in Montesereno and the other way around. I'll confirm with her. I can reach out to her.
Yeah, it states like the residency two years, and then it says I've been leaving in Los Gatos for seven years and Montesereno for the past two years. So I assume she means that she is currently a resident. But yes, absolutely, that is something that should be confirmed.
Yeah, yeah, I read it the same. Okay.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's what I thought also. But anyway, any other questions or comments on that? I suppose we could, if you're going to approve it, you could approve it subject to verification of a residency. Any member of the public wish to comment on this? If not, bring it back to council. Any further constant comments? If not, can I get a motion to approve her appointment?
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Natalia Nazarova to fill one of the two vacancies on the Montesereno Better Streets Commission, subject to confirmation of her residency.
Thank you. Second, by Councilmember Lawler, roll call please.
Councilmember Turner.
Yes.
Councilmember Luthold.
Yes.
Councilmember Lawler, yes. Mayor Prochek, Mekachuk.
I.
And Mayor Lahey.
I.
Motion passes. I'll confirm with her.
Thank you. Next item is consideration of appointment of Alison Zidler, Shalini, Siri Vastava, and Thomas Connolly to fill three vacancies on the Montesereno Site and Architectural Commission. Are any of those individuals present?
Yes, I do have one.
I see. Alison Zidler's name on there. Ms. Zidler, would you like to address council?
Would you like to address the council? Oh, I think he was out. Oh, when you have silence, sorry.
Hello, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, welcome. Thank you for coming in. Please go ahead.
For having me. Yes, I've, I've been served on the site in Architectural Commission the last two years, and I've really enjoyed it. I've enjoyed some of the co-meetings with city council and knocking on residents' doors with city councilor Lawler. And I would just like to continue.
Great, thank you. You're doing a great job as it is, and thank you for working on that ADU thing with the rest of the staff and personally going out there. Any member of council have any questions of Ms. Zidler? Because if not, we have two other people, Shalini, she was, she's not present, nor is.
Is actually Shalini is present.
Oh, she's present. Yeah, Shalini, please go ahead if you'd like to address us.
Would you, would you like to?
Hi, council members and federal residents. My name is Shalini and very happy to be here today. My family and I, we moved to Montesereno about four years back. Prior to that, we lived in a very community-oriented neighborhood in Rivermark for fifteen-plus years. But Montesereno definitely enchanted us when we were looking for homes and hasn't fallen short at all with respect to our expectations. So I, I'm in Big Tech. I used to work in Big Tech for a long time. I was at Apple twelve years, leading program management, and then at Facebook. More recently, earlier this year, my mom passed away, and I decided to take a break from my job and really want to focus on doing work that is more impactful, and volunteering is something that's been close to my heart. So I would love to be on the site in Architecture Committee, participate in the decisions and improvement of the city, and do whatever I can. My academic background actually is construction engineering. I also studied architecture as a part of my four-year engineering course. Have a lot of extended connections, friends who I still am in touch with, who are actively, but you know, but proactive professionals in this space. So definitely, it's a close to my heart, and I would love to kind of connect the dots and be able to contribute to the advancement of the city.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and you bring a great background. So we look forward to having your work on the SNA, if that's, if you're confirmed. Thank you so much.
Happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions?
Thank you very much. One last point. My two boys both were on, one was on Youth Commission for four years, the other one is right now. So as a family, we are very actively involved and love, love to give back to the city as much as we are getting. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. That's what makes Montesereno a great city, because people do contribute and volunteer for a lot of things. All right. So at this point, any other comments or discussions on this particular item? Is Thomas? Yeah, Thomas is not here, right?
Correct.
Okay, so he's not here, but any member of the public have any questions for any of the people who applied for the position? Doesn't look. Okay, no, no hand. So we will need a motion to approve the appointment of the members who have applied for the city council, I'm sorry, for the commission.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I will second the motion.
Okay, Councilmember Lawler's motion, may I put a second roll call please?
Councilmember Lawler, yes. Councilmember Luthold.
Yes.
Councilmember Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Prochek, Mekachuk.
I.
And Mayor Lahey.
I. Thank you very much. It's passed. Congratulations for your appointment, Ms. Zidler and Shalini, and Siri Vastava, and Mr. Connolly is not here. Unfinished business, we go to the introduction, and we were the first reading of ordinance number NS two thirty-two. That is to amend section ten point zero six point one four zero pertaining to ADU and ten point zero six point one five five. Staff report, please.
Oh, ma- mayor, may I say something?
Please.
I just wanted to thank the Better Streets Commissioners and the Site and Architectural Commissioners for volunteering their time and effort and expertise to the city. It's, it, it's very helpful to us. And thank you so much. And I, my, my children were on the Youth Commission, and it's, it's just wonderful to have, have people involved in the community. So thank you very much and welcome.
I think the entire city owes them a thank for doing what they do. It's not, not easy work. Thank you. Thank you for that, Mayor Prochek. All right, so we go to the ordinance on the ADU that I just read. Staff report, please.
Thank you. Again, I'm Diana Perkins, the city planner. At the November first city council meeting, the council discussed municipal code changes to the current ADU requirements to both reduce potential constraints to ADU construction as well as updating the code to comply with new state laws that will be effective on January first, two thousand and twenty-three. The city council directed staff to return with an ordinance to update the municipal code accordingly. The specific changes are detailed in the staff report, but the major items include limiting the design and development standards for ADUs to objective standards only, and no guideline or subjective standards will be used to review ADUs. The front setback requirements not be used to prohibit the construction of an ADU that is up to eight hundred square feet in size. These changes will also eliminate the parking requirements for ADUs that are constructed concurrently with the new main house. And also, the ordinance includes establishing an amnesty program to allow property owners with unsubmitted ADUs to legalize the dwelling units without code enforcement penalties. This ordinance was reviewed by the Site and Architectural Commission during the second reading. The commission recommended that the city council adopt, introduce the ordinance, and staff also recommends that the city council introduce the ordinance and waive the first reading of ordinance number NS two thirty-two. This concludes the staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember, if you have any, any council member having questions of staff on this ordinance? Also, Luthold, please go ahead.
Thank you. I'm not sure if it slipped past my tired brain or whether I didn't hear it. Did we previously, or does this take the owner occupancy requirement away for the ADUs? What's the status of that?
Yes, this ordinance would eliminate the owner occupancy requirements that would would otherwise require the property owner to live in the main house or the ADU. Currently, those such requirements are waived under state law through two thousand and twenty-five, but we, this ordinance would eliminate it from our code beyond that also.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff?
Sure, I've got a question. Most, most of what is in this ordinance is required by the state. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So we really don't have that much choice. Is that correct?
You have choice in the amnesty program and the owner occupancy requirements.
Okay, thank you. That was, thank you for clarifying that. I'm, I'm good with that. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Councilmember Turner, please go ahead, and you're on mute.
Yes, I don't have questions. I just have a comment. I think since we're depending on ADUs to satisfy arena mandates, I think it's important that we make these units as attractive as possible and as reasonably as we can, as reasonable as we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yeah, Councilmember Lawler, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you, mayor. So, so I guess my concern really is, I mean, there's no flexibility in the sense that we have to allow the conveyance of an ADU separately from, from the original law. Is that correct? separately from, from the original law. Is that correct?
No.
That is mandated by the state?
That is. Um there are quite a few um criteria in which that can be done, um including or affordable housing. The likelihood of that happening in Monteserino is probably low.
Okay.
But yes, we do have, we are, that is a statement.
And that's right. And then one of the requirements would be that was built by a nonprofit. Is that correct?
Exactly. I was just trying to find that. Okay.
Any, any other questions of staff?
My final question, um this addresses the concerns that one of our residents, Mr. Lively, had. Is that correct?
Correct. That is both the amnesty program and the owner occupancy.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there another question of council? I'll go to the public. Any member of the public wish to address this matter on ADUs? Are there any hats raised?
No hands.
No hands raised. So we'll come back to council for council member comments at this time. Any council member have any further comments on this matter? If not, time for a motion. Would I take a motion to approve the staff's recommendation?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Turner, second. Second by Councilmember Lawler. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Mepo?
Yes.
Pretend Mekachuk?
I.
Mayor Lai.
I. Thank you. Uh next item on the agenda is discuss and provide direction to staff regarding potential changes to the Munich Code definition of structure. Staff report, please.
Yes, thank you. So this item was originally brought up at the August second City Council meeting where the City Council directed staff to review the current municipal code definition of a structure and to provide information at a future council meeting to discuss the possibility of removing swimming pools and spas from this definition. Um this issue was then discussed by the City Council at the September sixth meeting. Um the council had quite, quite a detailed discussion and did request staff to provide some additional information um and, and bring this item back for further discussion. The current definition of a structure in the municipal code includes anything constructed on the ground or attached to something located on the ground as well as specifically including swimming pools and spas that are capable of pouring water to a depth of two feet or more. One of the main purposes of this definition is to determine the structural coverage that is provided on a parcel. Um the structural coverage is a zoning standard that limits the total area of structures on a parcel. The structural coverage currently includes the area of a swimming pool or spa as these are specifically included in the definition of a structure. Um if the swimming pools and spas were removed from this definition, that would result in an increase in the allowed square footage of other structures on the property as the area of a swimming pool would no longer be included in that calculation. On the area of the swimming pool, however, would still be included in the impervious coverage um which is another zoning standard that limits total impervious area on a parcel. Attachment one to the staff report includes information about how other local jurisdictions define and limit the overall structural and impervious coverage on a lot. Based on this information, Monteserino is unique in including swimming pools and spas in structural coverage. However, it is not uncommon for jurisdictions to have unique zoning standards. While reviewing the current definition, staff also noted that it is very broad and can be interpreted to include at-grade paved surfaces such as sidewalks, patios, or decks. And those items are already specifically included in the municipal code definition of impervious coverage. So clarifying the definition of a structure to remove these types of at-grade improvements would eliminate overlapping requirements and better ensure consistent application of the code provisions. Our staff recommends that the City Council direct staff to return at a future meeting with an ordinance to change the definition of a structure to remove swimming pools and spas and to add clarifications to the definition as specified in the staff report. While the review of this definition was prompted by discussion at a code enforcement appeal hearing earlier this year, the staff report analysis and the discussion before council tonight is not related to any pending code enforcement case or other application, which is not on the agenda for tonight's meeting. This does conclude the staff report and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank, thank you very much. Uh all right, uh questions from the council of staff?
Sure, I've got a question for you. Um. I've looked at ordinances in other jurisdictions and I've lived in other jurisdictions where uh we've had construction. And it seems to me that the ordinances are not sorry, things like the metrics that include the coverage ratios and structural coverages are intertwined. So you can't just take one of them and move it away and say, we're gonna, we're gonna have an apples for apples comparison here. And as an example of that, when I looked at uh Saratoga, if you had a lot size of, say, ten thousand square feet, you would have a smaller house on that lot than you would in Monteserino. But you'd be able to have a larger swimming pool. So it seems to me, and this is my question for staff, uh did you look at the, the way the different metrics or measurements are interrelated? And what happens if you, if you change the standards on one and the impact of not changing others?
So, um yes, we did look at that. Um and and this was discussed and some of the additional information that's in the staff report from the September sixth meeting. There was um comments made at that meeting about potentially if the swimming pools were taken out of the definition of a structure and then likewise the structural coverage, perhaps reducing that structural coverage that's allowed to not allow more structures on the site. Um the concern with that is that it could create legal non-conforming properties. And based on our current records, we cannot determine exactly um how many such, such properties would result in a non-conforming status based on that change. Um so the, the recommendation from staff is to leave the structural coverage um the amount allowed on each parcel but remove the actual pool, which would then in theory allow additional size of structures, but the pool would still be included in impervious coverage.
Thank you. My second question is, how many problems have we had with this particular ordinance in our past, to the best of your knowledge?
So to the best of my knowledge, I wouldn't say we've had any problems, but there um have been a couple of applications um that have had to reduce I'm sorry, particularly applications for a new house who have had to reduce a planned future swimming pool or the size of their structures to comply with the structural coverage. But that's been part of the planning process before the application would be heard by the commission, Site Architectural Commission.
Understood. My, my third question, I hope I'm not um taking too many questions away from others, but um if we changed this structural coverage definition to exceed swim, to exclude swimming pools, essentially what we're doing is we're saying, we're allowing, so I'll pose this as a question. If we make the change, are we allowing our residents to build larger swimming pools? Then otherwise?
Potentially, yes.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you for that. Any other questions for staff?
I'll, I'll have a follow-up question to that one. So following along those lines, then if we change this, are we not gifting developers more square footage in terms of the house?
Yes, there could be more square footage on the house or accessory structures if the swimming pools were removed, then I think. Thank you.
Any other questions? Also, are you told?
Yeah, actually, um a follow-up question to what Councilmember Lawler just stated um in terms of the change and the effect of the change. Is it um can, it's safe to say that essentially it's square foot for square foot um that we're potentially increasing the size of the house. I brought up my own uh large swimming pool as an example. Of course, there might be impervious surface limitations, but uh with close to a twenty by forty pool, um that's eight hundred square feet that I couldn't build on the house before. Is it square foot for square foot? And so now my house could suddenly increase in size by eight hundred square feet while I add another eight hundred square feet in the ADU?
Yes, it is. Um currently, the square footage of swimming pools is a one-for-one count to the square footage of a structure. Um there are properties um in the city that have or are close to the maximum structural coverage without a swimming pool. So those properties would not get any additional square footage if the pools were removed. So basic properties with a pool could get more square footage of this change.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
And I, I would just like to take a quick opportunity to overview the alternatives presented in the staff report for the City Council. So uh alternative one uh would revise the city would be for the council to direct staff to revise the city code uh to uh remove swimming pools, spas, and jacuzzis from the definition of structural coverage. Alternative two would keep those as structural coverage and it would revise the existing city definition to more closely near what staff are doing in practice. So it would basically alternative two would be to clarify what we are doing now. Uh alternative three is council can direct staff to do something else. And alternative four is the council can do nothing, in which case the city code would remain the same. Um as Diana has highlighted, you know, staff would likely recommend that the council take either option one or option two. In any of the case, clarifying how they would like the city code to, to work in practice.
Thank you for those comments. Any other questions of that?
Uh I have sorry, I've got a follow-on question.
Sure, go ahead.
Can you, um Attorney Rudin, can you explain alternative two? Because I, I sort of missed that one a little bit.
So.
Between alternative two and alternative four?
The difference between alternative, all right, let's, let's look at the staff report in terms of our language that exists in our current code. Uh our current code says structural coverage means the area measured in a horizontal plane covered by all buildings and other structures on a parcel of property or lot, as the case may be. Um oh, that is, that is not the actual language. Diana, can you, okay. All right, so that is actually on the bottom of page one. Structure means anything constructed or erected, the use of which requires location on the ground or attachment to something having location on the ground. For purposes of this chapter, swimming pools, spas, and jacuzzis, whether constructed above or below grade, which are capable of holding water to a depth two feet or more, shall be considered structures subject to the city's building regulations. Equipment appertinent, appertinent to the operation of swimming pools, spas, and jacuzzis shall be treated as accessory uses. So uh in consultation with staff, this definition likely could be improved to specify exactly that the last sentence that additional ground-mounted equipment is not intended to count against the structural coverage limit, which I understand staff have been doing in practice. And Ms. Perkins, perhaps you can comment on this?
Yes, so currently the definition is very broad and can pretty much be interpreted to include just about anything that's on a property, including a generator, an air conditioning unit. And in practice, we do not include those types of equipment in the um structural coverage calculations. So the alternative two um option in the staff report would clarify what is intended to be included or I guess I shouldn't say intended, clarifies what would be included in the definition of a structure and is in line with our current practices. But keeps the swimming pools and spas as part of that definition.
Uh additionally, the first sentence of our definition says that structure means anything constructed or erected, the use of which requires location on the ground or attachment to something having location on the ground. And I, I would say that the city's practice has not been to interpret that as covering hardscape improvements, stairs, walkways, et cetera. And we would want our definition to clarify that.
I understand that, that seems like a good improvement uh in the definition. So let me just just verify that I understand this. If I had, let's call it a two-foot by four-foot piece of concrete on the ground and I had an air conditioning unit like a split mounted there, a condenser mounted there. Under our current definition, it could be interpreted as structural coverage, but we choose not to do that. And, and uh alternative two would clarify that, would simplify that, make it unambiguous. But that same two-foot by four-foot concrete pad would be included in our impervious coverage calculation. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Uh I, I, I guess the structured coverage definition has always bothered me. I think our definition on how much how big a building could be in Monteserino is adequately covered under the lot size features that we have. So it defines how big a building can be and the building is not going to be any bigger. I think when those numbers arrived at, people weren't thinking about swimming pool being part of the structured coverage. At some point, uh it's, it, it became uh interpreted as being part of the definition. Uh so, so I, I have a serious issue with that. I think we need to go back and if you're concerned about how big a building is going to be, define the building sizes that are appropriate for a particular lot, but keep pools out of it because that's a separate thing. But we're also, if you look at the definitions that are included uh as considered as a covered structures. Uh and some of them are appropriate, you know, any dwelling building, second-tier garage, carport, toolhouse, guesthouse, greenhouse, poolhouse. Up to that, I'm okay with it. Then it says ground-mounted electrical equipment, ground-mounted mechanical equipment, ground-mounted plumbing equipment, ground-mounted solar installation, ground-mounted antenna or satellite dishes. I mean, tho- those things I believe could be taken out. Uh there's a treehouse, okay, I'll, I'll buy that one or other structure. And then tennis courts, pools, spas, jacuzzis, and play courts. Those, those are already subject to the impervious definition that we have. So now we're subjecting them to a second definition under structure or structured coverage. I, I think that, that's probably spreading it too far. Uh so I, I, I guess maybe I would suggest us go back to alternate three, which is to direct the staff to return to City Council at a future meeting with an ordinance to modify the definition of structure with other modifications. So so you can take a look at that and can also look at whether really people are going to be starting to build bigger swimming pool just because they didn't think uh they could do that before, but now they realize they do. I think most people are still probably confused that pools are structured coverage or not until they come to this planning commission that and they tell them, hey, you can't do this. Uh so my, my thought would be we need to really work on this and also really understand whether by taking pools out of structured uh coverage, we're uh ex, people are going to just start extending their building size. And people build their buildings as, as uh as they build them and uh we provide for limitations as to how big those buildings are based on the squared lot area that we already have. So in a sense, we already covered that. I don't think we need to im- impose this restriction, which is which gets them. So my my thought would be, I think we need to clean it up and we need to really clean up. I mean, we don't want to be putting ground mounted solar installations. I mean, those things are a helpful thing to have on the given the electrical issues that are coming up. So those are my thoughts. Yeah, Councilor Turner.
Are you on mute?
I still don't see anything to indicate any substantial benefit to treating pools and spas under structural coverage rather than impervious coverage. And what I'd like to see, if we're going to go back with looking at this thing again and and then coming back, if we could do some research into how are we, how are our regulations more consistent with our neighboring cities? And why are our neighboring cities' definition very different than ours? What are the benefits to that? I mean, if we can, if we can truly understand that, maybe it'll help us come out of the hole that we're in and figure out, yeah, here are the benefits and here are the things that we should consider that we never really considered. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? If not, we'll go to the public. Any members of the public wish to address on council on this matter?
We have a couple folks here in the chambers and we also have a couple raised hands online. Which one would you like to?
Okay, let's take the folks that are present in chambers first.
Mr. Mayor, council members. I only read this earlier today, so I'm coming in cold, but I do work in other cities and towns and the structural, the whole concept of structural coverage is pretty much unique to this city. Everyone else deals with buildings and impervious coverage and regulates them separately. I absolutely agree with the man. If you're going to look at taking swimming pools out, you should take tennis courts out, you should take sports courts, play courts, etc. All of those should go because they're not structures per se. What most jurisdictions do is they try to regulate things that are including the structure, things that start providing mass. So they say anything that's over three feet above ground, a deck or something like that, that's a structure. If it's close to the ground, we don't care. But if it starts getting above ground because it's a hillside law, then it becomes a structure. So I think whether it's on the ground or under the ground or whether it's elevated is the real distinction between whether it's a structure that you should consider regulating if you want to keep the structural coverage. So that's where I'd go. So I am in favor of taking swimming pools out of structures. I would also take tennis courts and other elements that are on the ground, look at them in impervious coverage and go that way. I wrote a comment with two exclamation parts, issues. And I don't know what that was, so I'm at a loss here. I think the question was, have you had any issues? That's right. I have come up against structural coverage when I've tried to design proper houses and I've had to make compromises based on your structural coverage. So, yes, there are issues. But I've always found ways around them, either by reducing something or doing things. But normally it's things that are below ground that you should not have to worry about, like a swimming pool. So that's my feedback. I think it's a black and white thing. Is it high or is it on the ground? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of public who's present in chambers if they want to address us?
We want to. Thank you. My name is Karen Glow. Thank you. First of all, I just wanted to thank Diana and council members for spending so much thoughtful care on this issue regardless of the outcome. It's very promising to see that you guys, you know, take this so seriously and like really try to do the right thing. So thank you for all of your efforts. Just had a few comments really quickly. One is so what I learned, so I know one of the houses probably an issue. What I learned from talking to colleagues is that in the insurance, in the insurance industry, it is very standard to not consider pools as structural coverage. I talked to a neighbor who is in the insurance industry and she was baffled by that definition. And as you all know, other cities don't consider pools as structural coverage. Thank you, Diana. I heard painstakingly checking neighboring cities such as Saratoga, Los Gatos, Hillsborough and Los Angeles Hills. And I'll just reiterate what I said in the past, which is it is good policy generally to have consistent laws. It helps people understand, you know, generally how to operate. And then if we do feel that Monteserino should deviate from all other neighboring cities, then it'd be really nice to have us be able to articulate a compelling reason why. I I I think it's a good point. Mayor will have another check that that can check that other cities have different percentages. Los Gatos, which is our closest city, actually has the same percentage, I believe, for a ten thousand square feet lot. I think it's forty percent. And it feels very salient because they're like literally across the street from us, a stone's throw away. But if you look at other cities who have slightly lower percentages, I just checked based on Diana's good word. They actually have much more narrow definitions of structural coverage. And one of the cities will just say like, it's all buildings, including carports and garages, right? No mention of pools or like all the other, you know, electrical units stuck to the ground or tennis courts, et cetera. Another, and also to the company earlier, another city only looks at buildings or structures that are four feet above the ground. And in fact, I think Saratoga, which is just like a slightly lower percentage, maybe thirty some percent. They only look at something that has three walls and a roof, right? Which also did not include a pool. So I really encourage us to just really fix the issue at hand. If you're worried that people will build bigger houses, then I encourage you to exclude pools but lower the percentage. I understand it will create nonconforming properties. But, you know, I think that happens anytime of a change in law. You could grandfather system properties, but fix for it for new construction or renovations. Thank you very much for your time and really appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other members of the public in chambers who should address the council? If not, let's go to the phone lines.
We have Stanley White. Stanley, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Your time will start.
Okay, hi. I also wanted to iterate what Karen said. I wanted to thank city staff for all the diligent work they've done and city council for all the time they spent deliberating. Really appreciate this. I don't have that much more to add. I did find it interesting also, having learned that insurance companies generally don't consider pools as part of structural coverage. I think there is something to be said about a difference in interpretation about structural coverage and being different across towns and across industry averages and an industry that's particularly important to homeowners, which is the the insurance industry. I'd also like to echo that if staff's recommendations went through exactly as is, it would put us directly in line with Los Gatos, which I think is a pretty good comparison. I also think that I think at the last staff meeting, it was discussed, well, why is there discrepancy? And I think it's a really good question for people to ask. Of course, I I encourage staff to try to understand this more, but I do think that Diana did come back with an answer that given that there has been changes to the staffing at the Monteserino City Office, it's kind of unclear and difficult to know what was the reason for this to begin with. And in these situations, I'm at least in my business and we do these things. We often don't ask, well, you know, why was it here? It's important to know why was it here? But it's actually most important to decide what is the right course of action now. Like the past is the past. We are have a decision held before us. What do we think is the right decision to be made? And thanks to staff and thanks to all the research, we know there is some inconsistency in the definition. We know that if we follow staff, we are absolutely consistent with Los Gatos. And I do think the way that industry treats this is probably an important data point as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I see a hand raised by David. So David Pound. Please go ahead.
Hi, thank you. My name is David Pound. I am a, my family and I are residents of Monteserino. We're also neighbors of Karen and Stanley. And I just wanted to express our support for any potential changes that that would not count pools as structural coverage, especially if they allow any neighbors with, you know, existing pools that may be over that coverage as per the existing ordinance to continue to exist and be enjoyed as well as, you know, any anybody else who who might be found in that situation. So I'm I'm in favor of these potential changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public? All right, back to council for comments. Any council member have any comments? Also, Lou told, please go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. I appreciate the public input and staff input on this. I do think that we have current expectations amongst our neighbors about the sizes of the houses that are next to them and what exists. And that we need to be very careful to look at this and to take into account these issues, especially in light of the ADU rules that are imposed on us that cannot affect impervious coverage and can't can't affect the structural coverage limits, the SB nine splits and the changes that are coming. We don't want to pave over paradise. And I think there is a real concern with that. We don't want to become a city of McMansions. So while I'm open to fine tuning this definition, I'm not open to increasing the size of structures that already exist because now the pool doesn't count or dramatically increasing that size. And I'm not open to allowing people to push our limits to the absolute max and then add a pool because I have a lot of concerns about impervious coverage, which I I think, given the ADU issues now, we are indeed paving over water recharge to the aquifer in Santa Clara Valley is absolutely essential. So I think maintaining the community character of Monteserino and protecting our environment suggests that we need to do just about everything possible to make sure that we don't increase the overall burden on on the earth here. So I would like to see my suggestion and what I'm for is if we pull pools from the definition that we do carefully look at the size numbers for what we allow for that they coverage. As people pointed out, what's grandfathered in is grandfathered in. People can prove what their coverages were if it turns out that they are made nonconforming by this. But I don't want to see the bulk increase and I don't want to see coverage increase. So that's my my feelings about this. So I think we need to to do what Mr. McCutcheon said, which is review all of these metrics together and carefully graph them and bring them to our citizens and then have people talk about it while we try to solve this problem.
Thank you. Any other comments from council?
I have one.
Wrong.
Councilmember Lawler.
Councilor Lawler, okay, I guess I can't see her for some reason.
That's okay. That's Al has to turn to me. I just wanted to echo Councilmember Lou Gold's thoughts. You know, there's a saying that you don't tear down a fence until you learn what it was built for in the first place. And Monteserino is unique and it was written in our code for a reason that pools are structures, right? To preserve the rural look and feel of Monteserino and to prevent maximum maximizing the square footage on properties. And so it's it's there for a reason. And I, if we were to change the definition of structure and take pools out of it, then we're we're just basically allowing developers to to take that extra square square footage and max out square footage. And we know that, you know, no disrespect, Mr. Jeans, but we know that developers like to maximize their footage. And you also mentioned that you always find ways around Monteserino's limitations. So it's really not a problem. So I I do not think that we should be changing something and irreparably changing the look and feel of our community because that's what we fell in love with, is its rural and local nature. And I'd rather see, you know, if someone's in violation, that that be remedied not by changing code. I don't think that's necessary and that will impact our community in the long term. So I I think that that is rash and that's not the right thing to do. So I would like to, at this point, take no action or consider it a zero sum game and come back with changes to maximum square footage of homes to adjust for that, for for that change. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
All right. Well, it's it sounds sounds like this. There's enough going on here that that requires further attention. And the whole thing we're concerned about is not changing the look and feel of Monteserino. Our lot sizes, limitations, they are there for like eight thousand square foot lot can only have forty percent maximum coverage. If we need to figure out and that's where it might have a bigger impact than anywhere else. On a forty three thousand square foot lot, Monteserino only allows twenty percent coverage, whereas Los Gatos allows forty percent coverage even for that size lot. On the previous size, we have a thirty percent limitation for for coverage for a forty three thousand square foot. Whereas Los Gatos has no limit on any size square foot. So we can be exactly like Los Gatos. I mean, it's nice to see Los Gatos have a broader thing on something, but I don't think we want to quite go there. However, we do want to examine what we can do. So I I would suggest we go back to direct staff to return to city council, take a better view of it and see if we need to pull in, you know, push someplace. Doesn't come up very often. So I guess the builders are already finding a way to do whatever they want to do. But and 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 it it may have to be a definition of like right now, it says two feet, maybe we need to go three feet or four feet or something else before that becomes a structured area so that we don't have these big pools that are going in. And we're still allowing people to benefit from what they can benefit. So that would be my thought is to go back and say, explore alternate number three. There's more work for you, Ms. Perkins. I hope you don't mind doing it.
May I weigh in on this?
Well, yeah, sure. Go ahead.
Okay. I am concerned as Councilmember Lou Gold is and Councilmember Lawler in that if you is, let me back up. You, the state has mandated us to include certain things like ADUs that do not count towards impervious coverage, nor do they count towards structural coverage. They're just going to go in. We're, we have we have two hundred and twenty five plus, I think, eight on the standby list that want to be put in ADUs. So we know there's going to be a demand for ADUs and those aren't going to go towards structural coverage or impervious coverage. I am very concerned that what's happening with our water here and and the ability of the water to to go into the soil versus running off, going to the storm sewer and going to the bay. And I think that we need, as Councilmember Lou Gold said, we need to recharge our groundwater to the extent we can. And I just don't see why, what the compelling reason is to change our structural coverage definition to exclude swimming pools at this point in time. Further, if and the the way I calculated some numbers that Saratoga would have, would allow a smaller house but a larger swimming pool. Apple on an apples for apples basis. And I'm like, okay, I get it. There's the trade offs that Mr. Jeans talked to. And I'm like, okay, I get it. There's the trade-offs that Mr. Jeans talked to. He said, okay, if I want to have a house this big, I can have a pool this big. If I want to have a bigger house, I have to have a smaller pool, et cetera. I mean, people make those trade-offs. And I, I understand that. So, and I appreciate that. I think that any person that wants to develop a property in Monte Sereno, it's expensive. I mean, it's expensive land here. The dirt is expensive. And when you're, when you're dealing with an expensive building, you do your research. You just don't say, okay, the structural coverage is, is I'm going to take Los Gatos's definition. You look at it. That's what you pay architects and designers for, to make sure that it's, that it's buildable. And then they take it to staff on a pre-approval basis and they say, hey, is this gonna work? Have I, have I thought of all your rules and regulations? And I know the staff are excellent at giving feedback uh, very quickly on that. So um, I feel uncomfortable changing the definition. And if we want to send staff, send it back to staff or a deeper dive into this and, and broadening and, and understanding how all these factors interrelate to each other. I think that's a tremendous amount of work. And we're probably not going to arrive at very much of a different conclusion if we just leave it the way it is. If you wish to clarify it, I'm good with that because that makes it easier for staff in terms of what their interpretation is. So that's kind of where I am on this.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Councilmember Luthold, please go ahead.
Thanks. Um, so, so I'm hearing uh, three of us at least saying, let's not um, let's not change the rules as they've been enforced, which I think does point to, I believe it was choice number two, which is an improved definition of what we have been enforcing, um, so that it's very clear and no one can uh, either intentionally or unintentionally try to either misinterpret or twist that language um, to say something different than what staff had always been enforcing in the past. So I do think that um, my recommendation based on what I'm hearing is that we do, uh, do nothing to change the uh, uh, the general situation, but that we go ahead and um, task staff with improving the definitions so that there can be no misinterpretation by anyone as we go forward.
Okay. Attorney Rudden, did you want to say something?
Yes, and I, I was going to point out that um, I think while the intent of option two was to have a definition that exactly mirrors uh, what the city's actual practices are, I think if that's the direction council wants to give us, we will be making a couple other minor revisions to that definition and bringing it back in an ordinance. Uh, it sounds like it is very clear that at least a majority of the council definitely does not want to go with option one to remove pools or to change the definition of structural coverage in any way that would allow for additional structures to be uh, created that would not currently count as structural coverage.
I, I might suggest if you're gonna go with two, to at least look at all the other items that are lumped in there. Uh, like uh, ground mounted electrical equipment, ground mounted mechanical equipment, ground mounted plumbing equipment, ground mounted solar installation, antennas, satellite dishes, and at least, at least consider taking those out because those uh, uh, really don't, don't, are not going to impact somebody who's designing a structure to figure out how much square foot he's going to be using for uh, these kind of installations.
Yeah, and we, we will look into that and revise that as appropriate. I think, you know, based on the example Councilmember Mekachuk provided about, you know, not counting the concrete pad and the uh, outside heating equipment or AC unit against the structural coverage, we can certainly modify that accordingly. Uh, I think the original intent there was if somebody has like a ham radio antenna that they want to put on their property, that's not related to the building, uh, that that's gonna count. Um, you know, uh, cell phone towers or other, you know, big utility equipments, you know, tho- those were intended to count. Um, so we'll revise that accordingly.
All right. And, and I, and I, I, but I still feel like the definition of structured coverage should not have pools in there. So I'm going to stick with that because it just, does, does not make, you know, it, it, it doesn't judge it in my way of taking. All right. But I see where council is going with it. So at this point, motion to uh, to alter it to with appropriate uh, uh, changes that we've discussed. I guess that's the motion. We have somebody who, who can make that motion?
I mean, I'd be happy to make that motion, but I think this was simply a provide direction and I think we may have succeeded at that.
All right, let's leave it at that then. Thank you.
All right. May, may I, may I clarify that, please? Just so that staff is going in the right direct, in the direction as intended. So the direction as intended is to improve the language so that it's less ambiguous and it's clear what's, what's acceptable and what's not. But it's, it's not to change the contents of what is administratively accepted or interpreted at this point in time.
So a, a non-substantive change is basically what the council is, is looking at. Yes.
Yeah, and, and just for the record, I also want, I also wanted to point out that about the city council received about eight, eight emails or more from neighbors of uh, uh, with the pool that started this, this whole thing, uh, saying that we should not consider pools as part of the structure and uh, uh, supporting the, uh, advocates' position on that. So I, I just want to put that on the record. Thank you. And if, any further discussion on this? If not, I guess we're gonna go to our next item. There's no further discussion. I think we've already gone to the public on this. So we're done with that. So we'll now go to committee and commission reports. Uh, the Cities Association Board of Directors report, let's see. Councilmember, Mayor Porte Mekachuk, usually have you go first if you don't mind?
Sure. Um, Mayor, Alahi, you and I and um, City Manager Leon Artis attended a meeting last week and I'll let you uh, describe that. But I thought that was a very, that was a great uh, workshop that we attended. Um, that's my only comment on that one. Uh, going down the list, the BTA meeting was canceled. Uh, so I have nothing to report there. In terms of Silicon Valley Clean Energy, I will be attending a ribbon cutting ceremony in uh, Southern California on a new uh, solar farm that's going in place. And I'm very, I'm really looking forward to that. That's on the thirtieth of November. Uh, West Valley Clean Water, um, I have nothing to report on that. Uh, and then Mayor's managers, you can speak to that, Mayor. And then on West Valley Solid Waste Recycling JPA, we have a meeting on the fifth of December uh, to go through the contract with uh, the proposed bidders. So that will be an important uh, meeting and we'll, we'll be taking decision there and that's where unfortunately I think we're gonna be prepared for a rate increase on our, on our solid waste. So um, that is my report. Oh, just a sec. Also, I guess in terms of the Finance Ad Hoc Committee, I don't think there's anything to report there and as well on the Housing Ad Hoc, I'll let uh, Councilmember Luthold talk about that.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Councilmember Lawler.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, let's see. Uh, Silicon Valley Animal Control Authority, I have a meeting tomorrow. Uh, going down the list, Youth Commission, uh, the Youth Commission met for the first time in council chambers since uh, the pandemic. So it's very exciting. And they are already planning what they want to do for the uh, holiday parade in Los Gatos. So that's great. Uh, and then I have nothing to report regarding Valley Water. They had their meeting uh, last month. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Luthold.
Thanks. Um, nothing, no new commissions, uh, reports from me. Uh, Library next meeting will be in January. The uh, regarding Housing Ad Hoc, I don't have any new information, um, although um, if staff has any uh, feedback from uh, the State Agency, I, obviously we want to hear that at the earliest possible opportunity, but I haven't heard anything active about that. And then um, one more, that's more of a comment related to the VTA PAC um, that Mr. Mekachuk is on. Um, I've noted that all of the meetings are always canceled. Uh, it's starting to appear that VTA is probably the most dysfunctional uh, agency in all of Santa Clara County. And if Monte Sereno can do anything, I know we're small. I know we're mostly on advisory committees that they completely ignore. Uh, but this is something that um, the city may want to look into putting some pressure on this or maybe even bringing some uh, public light on it because VTA is um, is really dysfunctional at this point, probably needs to uh, have some complete change in leadership and mission. So, yeah, I just wanted to add that there, but I think Monte Sereno as a city should look into what uh, pressure we can bring to bear on VTA because they're not doing their job at all. They're not even having meetings.
Um, if, if I could follow up your comment, uh, Mayor, is that okay?
Yeah, please go ahead.
Yes, um, I believe that the VTA uh, is looking for some new directors and the municipalities that don't have representation on the Board of Directors are represented on the Policy Advisory Committee in general. And uh, I do know that I think it's the mayors and west valley mayors and managers that it's the mayors that are recommending uh, appointees to the Board of Directors. And Councilmember Moore, Kitty Moore from Cupertino has been the uh, Chair of the BTA Policy Advisory Committee. And I believe that she would bring a strong voice to the board uh, in the direction that, that would address the issues that you raised, uh, Councilmember Luthold. So um, I would put my support behind uh, her as a candidate.
Yeah, I don't think we can do a motion on that. It's not been properly agentized. So
I'm just
I take, take your, take your recommendation. Uh, and if the VTA has been as bad as it has been, I don't know why you're recommending Kitty Moore from what the Councilmember Lawler, you totally just uh, said about the VTA. So maybe there's a conflict there. I know I served on the VTA for, for one term and decided it was just a waste of time.
And council members, I think perhaps we may be veering into an unagentized discussion of the VTA and I'm, I'm, I'm hoping we can stick to council member reports.
That's what you're there for, sir. Thank you. Uh, let's go on. Exciting commission reports. Councilmember Turner, please go ahead. I, I don't know, Councilmember Luthold, were you finished or did you have anything else?
All done. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner.
Hey, can I speak now?
Yeah, please.
Okay. Uh, I had, I um, attended the um, the CERT training. Uh, I was team captain for the NICP in Los Gatos. I think one of the things we need to do is to, is to uh, crack the whip on putting an NICP at City Hall. Uh, Jamie Fields was actually involved in the training and she was manning the EOC. So I think that would help our city, especially now where, you know, we are probably going to be faced with a lot of earthquakes. My second report is about the West Valley Sanitation District. We got, unfortunately, we uh, got a vote from uh, the committee to increase the rates about forty percent. So I am hoping that we don't see a full forty percent, but uh, watch your bills. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I guess my turn to make a report. So a couple of things. One is uh, AB twenty-four forty-nine, which has to do with the Brown Act stuff. And that was part of the uh, I think it was at one of the meetings I attended that it came up. On Silicon Valley Clean Energy Executive Committee Meeting, somebody went into a lot of details on twenty-four forty-nine. The new rules on uh, meetings. So you, you have the old Brown Act rules, which are still going to be in place, which basically means it, it really has to do with somebody who can't make the meeting. Uh, the, under the present Brown Act rule, they have to give you the seventy-two hour notice, you agentize it and they have to provide a location. At the twenty-four forty-nine, there's three times somebody cannot show up at a meeting as long as they have proper cause for it. And in, in those cases, they don't have to give a seventy-two hour notice. It's just emergencies or just cause for not being able to show up. And uh, they don't have to specify uh, their location. So some people could take advantage of it, but it sounds like a very restrictive way of doing it. Uh, so that, that goes into effect in Jan-, so from January twenty-four forty-nine, we go into effect. The Brown Act rules are there. Attorney Rudden, can please correct me if I'm uh, not, not saying this, stating it accurately.
Check, check your emails tomorrow for, for an update and some, some briefing on this new law. Thanks.
Thank you. The Silicon Valley Clean Energy has got a great program. I mean, these, they're an electric company, but they're a nonprofit company. Every money that, every penny that they save, they give it back to the community, either to uh, the Tefra, people who need, need the funds, or they've got subsidies that are available to projects. Uh, they have, they're, they're planning to have about thirty million dollars available over the next five years, uh, which will be available to, you know, uh, no income housing. It might even help us with some, with some ADU programs. And people who are making ADUs may want to take a look at that to see if they can benefit from it. But uh, and their rates are generally uh, going to be about two percent below PG and E rates. So they give discounted rates. And they also give all the money back to people who can use it. Uh, and the shortage of electricity is an issue, but as uh, Councilmember Porte Mekachuk pointed out, they're entering into a lot of contracts uh, to provide a clean energy and filling what the requirements are. The PUC is working on that too. So hopefully, hopefully those two things will meet. It's, it's a challenge uh, that they have to go through. Uh, the third thing they have done is issued bonds. Since the SVC, the Silicon Valley Energy is a tax-free entity. Um, there, there is a routine, people buy, they, they can issue bonds and the tax-free benefit can go to investors so that the investors who are buying these bonds uh, make money while Silicon Valley reduces its uh, amount that they have to pay by, by a couple of percentage. It's supposed to save them about four or five million dollars this year. So uh, it's, it's a very, very well managed organization and they're doing a great job. Uh, let's see what else did I have? Oh, strategic plan that uh, Mayor Porte Mekachuk referred to. Uh, it, it was a discussion, it was a person who led the discussion was basically on how council members should deal with each other, how they should be, you know, courteous to each other and how council members should respect each other. So, and then some of, some of them go through that training. Uh, a lot of city councils apparently have retreats where the council members and other individuals get together for a few hours. Now, we do kind of a retreat in our chambers, but maybe we need to broaden that and the next mayor maybe should look at that. Where we can have a retreat and maybe have some of those people come in and talk to us so we know, you know, the it, it should, it should be helpful to everybody else. Those are generally my comments. Anybody else have anything to add? Please go ahead.
I'd like to make a comment.
Yeah, please, Councilmember Lawler.
If we're into council member comments, I just, first of all, I want to congratulate our new city clerk on her appointment. I am thrilled. Uh, really happy that you're here and um, I'm sad that I'm leaving council, but I know it's going to be a great experience for everyone. And on a second note, I'd like to thank all of my fellow council members for their incredible support of me during my campaign and it's been a real honor serving with you.
Thank you so much. And you're not, not leaving yet. I think you still have to make one more meeting.
I still do. I know. I mean, I just had to get that out there.
And actually, Attorney Rudden, if you can clarify that for us, uh, if not now, maybe later. I'm trying to figure out whether um, this new council is seated at the beginning of our next meeting, December six is our meeting, I think the county certifies election the fifth, that you don't need to. Or whether they're seated at the end of the meeting, uh, so that they really, you know, and the, and the mayor transformation takes place at the end of the meeting. So that they really participated in the agenda for the subsequent meeting. Or whether they seat at the front of the meeting so that the transformation takes place. If you, if you have any thoughts on that now, please let us know.
I, I, I think this is something that will need to be decided in consultation with the city manager. I know a lot of cities handle this in a variety of different ways and there's not really a fixed or set process. The legal distinction is of legal distinction is, of course, uh, council members, uh, are still in office until basically the oath of office is administered. So Steve, uh, did you have a particular plan for how you'd like to handle the December sixth meeting?
Thank you, Mr. Rudin. There is a procedure sixteen ninety-one point seven in our town ordinance that goes through, um, all the processes of the appointment of the, uh, new um, mayor and mayor pro tem, the nomination process, the voting, etc. So we will be bringing that out with a staff report as we did last year, as well as the order of, uh, appointing the new council members. Um, in a nutshell, we open the meeting with the existing council. I think that we, uh, say our goodbyes to our two wonderful council members, Mr. Luthold and, uh, Mrs. Lawler, who are leaving us. And then we go on to swear in the new council, um, which includes the current mayor and, um, Mr. Wolfshine and Mr. Craig, and then that council will go and choose the mayor and the mayor pro tem subsequently. And then, uh, the new mayor and ma, mayor pro tem will have their incoming comments. Of course, there'll be outgoing comments by the previous mayor at that time, and then, you know, the new mayor and mayor pro tem will have their incoming comments. And, um, then, then the meeting will, will end. It'll be largely ceremonial that night. We won't have any other agenda items. Um, maybe some, some items on consent counter.
All right, I guess we can all plan on being in order to, into the city hall if we can, uh, to, uh, the ceremonies. Thank, thank you, uh, city manager on that. Any other council member comments? Before we go to the, yeah.
Also, we're we're on council member, uh, comments. I did want to.
Let me, let me take, let me take Councilmember Luthold first here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Please go ahead.
Oh, actually, I, I may have, uh, failed to put my hand down. I do have a future agenda item, uh, when we come to that. So if we, if we haven't rolled that in here, um, we can do that after the city manager's report.
All right. Sorry, Mayor Porta Mekachuk. Please go ahead.
I did want to acknowledge and welcome our two incoming council members that are sitting in the audience tonight. Um, and let you know that they are here as part of the, of, I guess, the transition. So that's a, that's a good thing. I just wanted to acknowledge them and thank them for attending.
Yeah, tha, thank you for doing that, and I think that, that's great. We are gonna have experienced council members, uh, on our team and, uh, it'll just be wonderful. Look, look forward to having them seated on the council. All right, uh, sorry, uh, any other council member comments? Uh, so now we go to city manager's report. Uh, Mr. and Mrs., please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to bring the council's attention to the annual Children's Christmas slash Holidays Parade twenty twenty-two. This is the sixty-sixth annual parade. And the first time we've had it since I've been the city manager because of the pandemic. It has been canceled the last two years. This is the morning Saturday, December third, so it's coming up in a couple of weeks. The parade begins at eleven AM, and I believe they want us to be all in our places at nine AM roughly. So we'll be working towards that, getting you the information where to go. We look forward to all your attendance in the parade. We do have two floats, one for our council and one for our youth commission, which we will be working on. And, um, essentially with the council, you'll be walking alongside a moving vehicle and a special, uh, I can say it's just gonna be a surprise. We have a musical act that will be accompanying you through the parade route. Um, and then with the youth commission, we plan on getting a trailer, which I secured the rental on today, decorating that, pulling it probably behind my truck or another volunteer's truck. Um, I also wanted to extend the invitation not to our currently seated five council members, who you will, I'll, all still be seated on uh, December third, but as well as the two new council members that will be joining, Mr. Craig, Mr. Wolfshine. Please join us in the parade and walk on the route with us. It'll be a very good time. It's a very happy event. Glad to have it back. And, uh, we look forward to the youth commission's participation as well. We'll be working with them and getting that out there, um, to the community. And that's, uh, that's it for my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and thank you, City Manager, for helping us with the appointment of the city clerk. I think that was very helpful. That is appreciated. Uh, we also go to the next item, which is future agenda item, Councilmember Luthold. Please go ahead.
Yeah, I just, um, wanted to, uh, bring this up in open session, um, and that is, um, first of all, congratulations, uh, to our city clerk on the offer of employment. Assuming that offer of employment is in fact accepted, uh, formally, when that's, uh, when the loop is closed on that. Um, I would recommend that, um, the council, either the old council or the new council, either, uh, is fine. Uh, but schedule a closed session with the city clerk to go over, uh, performance goals and, um, the matrix for future review, council expectations, lines of communication, all of those issues. Um, so that expectations are set well in advance and the lines of communication are opened up. So if there is to be a closed session on that before, um, December sixth, I'll be happy to coordinate and participate. Otherwise, uh, it might also make sense to place it sometime after December sixth, so that the new council members participate, and that is they would be, uh, dealing with future review issues and uh, and working with the city clerk. So just wanted to put that out there, and, uh, I hope there'll be follow-up on that.
Thank you much, so much, Councilmember Luton, and your input will be sorely, sorely, sorely missed. I think you've been, uh, such, such a wonderful, uh, such wonderful insights and so many things. Thank you so much. Uh, any other future agenda items? All right, uh, I, I guess we have a SB nine item that, uh, we may have to look at it again next, next year sometimes. Uh, to see if there's, uh, any, any room on that. I think we have, we will look at the HCD issues. Oh, one, one thing again, the builder's, uh, remedy issue is out there, so we need to be able to address that at some point. Anyone else have any other future agenda item? Okay, if not, I think, uh, that does it. So we can adjourn. Thank you very much. And good to have you all here today and look forward to meeting in chambers next time. Take care. Bye.
Bye.